And that there be, they said there's a range, but they recommended 2.75% increase annually on those. So if you're making $12 as a step one grade one and you increase, or $10 and you increase that, the 2.75, you have the 2.75 increase that next year in that same step one grade one. In addition to that, they recommended that there be a COLA associated with it. They didn't put a number so to that, they didn't say it should be .5, 5%, 2%. They just said that should be something in there that is associated. So in addition to, so each one of those steps when they go up that 2%, so step one's grade one goes for $12, goes up, say 2% based on the COLA. Historically, all employees, for the most part, not everybody, for the most part, every year, there's a step increase as well. So ultimately what that equates to is there being a more than a 2%, more than a 2.75% increase. Because you're not just taking a step, you're also seeing the increase on that next step going up as well. So this year in particular, just looking at the numbers, I pulled out some of the drastic changes within the percentage, percentage changes within the fiscal '20 salaries and fiscal '21. New employees coming in, they're dropping or something of that nature. And the average was about 4.33% for the employees. You'll see it goes up to 4.8, but the average of this was 4.33. And that includes, like I said, taking out like the 1.62% and a couple of 1.6%. I took out those low ones because I didn't think they were relevant to the conversation.
That percent is for fiscal year '21?
Twenty-one.
Does it look like '20 was more around 6%?
Twenty had a good bump, it's healthy.
That was a change in number of days within calendar year.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there were more weeks last year.
Exactly, that's what distorts it on this annual basis. But if you look at it on hourly basis.
That's right.
It's a level percent.
Sure, sure.
So now it goes to the budget, it's had to go up because of the dates. So in the same sense, at some point, there should be another year that it goes down more.
Which it looks like it probably did in '21 because it came back into the fours. The before, which four, the fours.
But ultimately, the percentage is one of the two components. The other component of it, which is, for me, something that's really important to look at is our salaries. What are people making? Because the, when you look at '14, when there was, when there were a discrepancy between market rates and what Topsfield was paying, was underpaying, efforts obviously were made and those were increased. The question that I have, that I don't have the answer for you, and I wouldn't want to give you an answer without having real data behind it, is are we still below market, are we at market, or are we past market? And are we at a point where?
They tried to solve a, essentially, in my view, a temporary problem with a structural fix. And the point is, they sort of, you know, aimed, aimed the rocket and then stepped away from the launcher. And once the target had come back within range in terms of increases, there was still the structure to keep giving the catch-up increases, so.
Yeah, there was nothing in the system that says, hey, we need to do this for three years to get even, and then drop back to where we should be.
Yeah, and then again, it would've taken more work, but if we'd sort of just sort of said, okay, we're gonna do this percentage to catch up this, and just done that instead of changing the whole structure. But we didn't have a structure well worked out for anyways.
It's very clear to do the math and figure out how quickly you can catch up. If the average town was on 25%, and we were, it would take X number of years to catch up to where they were.
The way I, the way I remember it was, when it was implemented, everybody was put in the right position, such that their wages or salaries were market as best possible.
People think it changes everything.
It was a full-time fix at that point in time. It was not, it'll take us three years to catch up. It put us all at, in.
At market level.
Twenty fourteen, at market.
At twenty fourteen, at market. Can you just describe that a little bit?
So the point is, when that grid was implemented, regardless of what you were being paid before, you were put somewhere in that grid to match the market.
To fix the problem.
All pay was raised?
No, some, some wasn't, because some was at and some.
But the ones who weren't, were they immediately raised?
Yes, yes.
So then why did we need to keep going up 5%?
But they did, they increased the grid. The whole grid moved up, but then the space between steps and the rate at which the grid, it had the internal structural increases also increased.
I know, but what I'm hearing is that they fixed the problem back in 2014 by moving people to the pay level they should've been at.
Right.
Done.
And then they increased the rate.
We shouldn't say, we'll talk about whether it was new or not. A new concept that said, if you have worked one more year in Topsfield, you are more valuable to the town because you're more knowledgeable and experienced. Therefore, you will get 2.75% increase in your pay the following year.
So if the other towns were not doing that, if they didn't go by that same thing, if you came in and worked for a year, you are more valuable, then our pay should be higher.
Should be considerably, considerably higher, yes.
I didn't know they were all rectified back in 2014. My understanding was this steps and grades and the increase, the COLA as they were calling it, was to rectify. But they were rectified six years ago.
The grid was to rectify as that point in time.
They changed it right at that point in time.
I think it was convenient in some regards, but the new, they both kind of got bubbled together, and I think it was very convenient in some senses to sort of say, the new grid is part of the rectification process.
Yeah, when it wasn't.
I agree.
Now, not everybody, not everybody, because you're there a year more, has a right to the 2.75. Your review, your employee review must reflect the fact that you have done a good job.
That's right.
And have a right to do that. If you have underperformed, then you will not get a new step.
Which probably 1%, 2% didn't get the step, if that's.
Yes.
Probably, yeah, I was gonna say, you have to really.
I've never gotten the names of those who did not.
A management's perspective on that, it's, it's a little tough to say hard or fast, you did, well, you did not. When you have sort of an ability to reward people on the scale, like we talked about in Beverly, how we had X amount of money set aside, and we could go through and say, this person put in, you know, 80 hours a week every day, we're gonna give them the max, and then find the, you know, basically build in there that. The way this is structured to set up is, you know, it's, you need to really, you really, really prove yourself really well, depending on who's making that call, and prove yourself really poorly. And it seems like more times than not, they lean, in most cases, they lean towards saying, everybody, whether you.
Everybody qualifies.
Right, like 90%, of you are good, you know, it should, it's a tough system.
It's a faulty assumption to say, if you came in and you did your job for a year, you're worth more to the town, and you should keep climbing. It said, you just did what we asked you to do. It doesn't necessarily make you more valuable forever, so that for every year, you continue to be more valuable. At some point.
It's a pretty shaky argument.
Well, my dad used to have a saying, you know, if someone came to him for a raise, and they'd say, you know, I have 20 years' experience. He would say, you have one year's experience 20 times. So it's like, at some point, unless you're learning and growing, taking on new responsibilities. You kind of, you know.
And there are, and there are people that do that. There are people that get better every year.
They might get better, but are they 5%?
Well, you don't know.
We don't know, is it every year 5%? Or is it this year, you get a 5% or a 2% whatever? But it doesn't mean you're gonna get the same thing next year, even if you're doing a little better.
So just a couple of, sorry, I was just gonna say, a couple of quick things. So the percentages, you know, that's one of the components of it, and that exists, and that has the effect on the salary. Salary is what, you know, for me, is the most important, because I want to make sure that we're being competitive. So we have talented people who work here, we want to make sure we retain it. It costs the town time and money to have to go out and hire new if we're below market.
Changing employees is expensive.
And also attracting talented people to come to the community, we want to make sure we're competitive. I don't have, like, I did reach out to some counterparts in other communities about the percentage increases. And I got a sense of where they've been at. But I don't have that comprehensive salary survey to say, you know, are, you know, 59 employees who are considering, where do they line up? I have a couple, for instance, I did get some information that was recently surveyed on the library director position. And there's a wide range on that, anywhere from the high 90s down to the 60s, actually, there was somebody in the 50s. And so, you know, if you look at that, our library director is right in there. She's not the highest, she's not the lowest, she's probably on the higher side, to be fair. But it's not like she's outpaced the other 15 communities or 11 communities on that survey. But she's, she's, she's doing well. I mean, we are paying competitively in that one instance. But I don't have the data to back up comprehensively across the board to let me answer.
But I think you said in here, 2% to 2.5%.
Typical.
That's what you're saying, it's typical. Because MMA, what are we, I'm talking with somebody, I try to get around the one question, which is. Well, every time I'm on, there's always, and how are you doing with your contracts? What are the increases? And for the last six or eight years, it's been, 2% has been really a pretty solid number that people come back with. For, I usually ask in reference to union contracts, because that's what we think about, I think about. So that, I think, has been reasonable across Massachusetts for at least a half a dozen years. Maybe two and a half in some cases, but this 2% is a pretty solid number.
Pretty standard number.
Yeah, pretty standard number. There isn't a direct correlation, but sometimes the way, from an operations standpoint, it's, it's been consistent, some of the communities I reached out with the percentage, that sometimes they do tie it to the uni contracts. So if they have 2%, which is a very common number in the uni contracts, you know, they'll raise it 2% for consistency's sake. But again, I think, kind of going down the percentage for a second, the, it's looking at the salaries, what I think is gonna really paint the picture and give us a really good sense of where we are competitively in the marketplace. So one of the things I did over the weekend was I talked to Mary from UMass Lowell. And she, or, sorry, UMass Boston Collins Foundation, and I explained sort of what we've been talking about. And that, you know, we're looking to do a salary survey, potentially to help direct us with what we, how we're doing relative to other communities. By the way, in the letter I mentioned too, that it's recommended every two to three years, a salary survey. From the old consultants that a salary survey should be conducted. I don't have any recent data to go off of. So this would be adhering to sort of what those recommendations were, if we went forward, something like that. It's a cost of $5,000 based on the scope of work we talked about. We, I might be able to go back to her and see if there's anything we can do better for that, if we decide we want to go forward with it. But it's a six to eight week process, they estimate, to get that data collected and produce some document that we can then go through and understand how we're doing. And it's, it's comprehensive, it's looking at ranges, it's looking at existing salaries, year served, benefits associated with longevity pay. And being able to put all that together, because it all sort of adds together to see, okay, how are we doing relative to salaries?
Is it possible to go in with other towns on that? I'm sure that would be helpful information.
It's still gonna come out and look at your town independently.
Yeah, but they gotta do your town.
Well, as soon as we do it, whoever does it for us, it's public record. And so everybody else can enjoy it.
Why is it public, it's not our data?
It's public record.
Oh, yeah, we spend public funds.
Oh, well, yeah, sure, that's right.
Public funds.
It's public record.
That is right. And we were talking about it.
The question, the first question is, who ultimately has recently done it? There was a time, I remember it was Rowley, I think, that it did, we picked off from Rowley. We asked them for their stuff and we used that. With Jenna was here to give us an idea whether we were on or off, yeah, yeah.
And I've asked other communities, I haven't, it's not extensive, my network quite yet, but I do have a lot of contacts. And I've reached out to them and I asked them for, you know, I told them sort of what our discussions have been, asked for, I knew the percentage was easy, it's at their fingertips, because just like I could look at this and tell them what that is, they can tell me what they were doing. This was a little bit more work, and they don't necessarily have all that data at their fingertips, so.
Nobody else has done this, nobody's.
Not that I'm aware of yet. I know in Beverly, when we did a salary survey, it was a lot more informal. We had our HR director would basically call up the communities and try to get some information. It wasn't necessarily even an apples to apples, and there was always notes on the side saying, this person, for one reason or another, there's some variation to what the numbers represent.
Salary survey is always challenged that way.
Right.
Is it equal? And some things are probably easier to do than others. Library director, library director. Higher superintendent.
A lot of these, you know, it should be somewhat consistent. Treasurer, accountant, town clerk.
Some of them are.
Without that. Yeah, town clerk, yeah, very clear, things like that.
The, the other thing associated with the salary survey was. Apologies, I had a thought that I wanted to share. At any rate, this, this to me is gonna really, you know, help us understand where we're in the marketplace. Because people don't pick jobs based on percentage usually, and the increase, they want to know what their annual salary will be.
Sure.
But we need to be conscious of this as managers, to make sure that this is reasonable for the community and that we're not outpacing what we're supposed to do.
And can I point out that for 2020, the federal cost of living adjustment is 1.6%. It's a great year to be negotiating contracts. Kevin, as I've mentioned to you, and I'll share with others, someone is gonna have to, in this part of the country, get the courage to come up with an increase, then stick to it, that begins with a 1 instead of a 2. And even if it's 1.178, because once we cross that psychological barrier of 2 is kind of the minimum, it's gonna help every town. And if the federal increase helps support that, I don't know. My feeling's always been, from the school point of view, is you gotta do it with the unions first, and then it's easier with the non-union people.
The, the one thing on the contracts is typically, a lot of the unions will wait to see what happens with the public safety, because they have more power when it comes to collective bargaining component. So what if, and we've gone to the JLMC in Beverly, unfortunately, it's something you try to avoid, but we've gone there. And typically, what they do is they look at other communities, what they paid, and they, they look at your financial situation, and they basically give you numbers that you have to use. And so we've, 2% is typically around the number that you, you'll come out of those. We've pushed for, we did, we did have 1% increases in the first year of a contract, but then it's 2.5 in three, or 2.5, 2.5. So they make it up.
You make it wide.
So at the end of the day, the number is.
Easier for this year's budget, somebody else will worry about it two years.
They have no incentive to save you money is the other problem. That's why, that's the problem with union negotiations, is that there's nobody you're gonna be dealing with across the table has an incentive to save you money.
And part of that's also debt structure on that 1%. We knew we were taking on the new middle school debt, and that the high school debt would be falling off the following year. And so we knew that, that one year.
But then you gave more later, and that's.
Right, because we had to pass.
You do a three-year contract.
That middle school over there must have cost a million, must have cost millions. That was huge.
Nine figures.
Nine figures?
Nine figures, wow.
Oh, 100, I think it came out 115.
Now the town hall isn't looking too bad.
By the way, I want, I want to interrupt here for a second. And I'm talking to Kevin Primera, and I want you guys to listen. There's no way that you could've walked into this job prepared to do the job that you think you'd like to do, okay? You don't have all the answers, and I know that. But I can see, I know where you're going, and I can see that over the course of the next year, or two, or three, we're gonna make some pretty serious adjustments to these red items, okay? And I'm comfortable with that, and I, and I hope that we're willing to give him, cut him some slack, to give him time to get into this. I hate like hell that you guys spent all weekend putting together stuff like this.
But you know, the other side of it is that I'm perceiving that already this year, and I'm comparing to just last year and the year before for me, the quality of conversation has changed. I feel that it's, we're more engaged.
Oh, we're a hell of a lot further ahead.
And I think there's more of a team feeling, and I'm team with you, Kevin, that, and we're identifying this. I've been sitting around listening and saying, we're not gonna get all these changes we want now. But boy, we're teeing up a lot of really important conversations that could have a real impact. Maybe next year and thereafter. And the whole thing is, if you can knock a quarter percent off something now and keep it a quarter percent lower, obviously, the growth curve is, over time, much better. And that's gonna be our job, is to make the structural changes and change some of the assumptions. And I'm very excited about where the conversation's going. I know this year's project is not where we're gonna see all the changes. But I think I'll go right to what you were saying, Boyd.
Agreed.
Yeah.
So the flavor, the flavor of what we're doing right now is much different than it's been for a long time.
Well, I told the FinCom, I told the FinCom a couple of weeks ago, this whole group has changed primarily because of our attitude about things, but also because we have what I think, for the first time, that we've ever had. A professional town administrator that knows what he's talking about. And he's, and he's just, and he's just getting started.
Two months, two months.
I agree with all of that, but I still think.
We have to make.
Oh, we gotta.
Oh, we need to work what we can today.
We gotta work on that 4.6%.
It's gonna be tougher with the structural stuff, but I think we need to nibble the edges, I agree totally.
Do you have a stomach for a two and a half override?
I don't want one, I, we'd have to be darn good reason, gotta make one hell of a case for it.
I'll tell you, people are getting ready to move.
I don't want it.
David, David and I were talking about that before you got in.
Some of my friends now are getting retired.
And I'm in real estate.
And I can tell you that a two and a half percent override would be hard to sell, I think.
No, I think it would be very, very hard to sell.
Well, hell, I think.
We always have to be realistic.
Yeah, and I, I'm afraid the schools are gonna put us in a bind one way or another. That's why I want to break it out.
On the subject of the schools, there is a difference between Masco and the elementary schools in the sense that we are in a different position to bargain with the elementary school. We can't bargain with the headquarters and the amount that they put down as well. But what our school committee develops, it's, it's just between us and them. I mean, there's no other parties involved. Superintendent is, and that he shares a third of his time, whatever, with the town in Topsfield. So we should be in a position to communicate as the mayor in Beverly communicates with the superintendent. We just haven't been there forever.
It's building up, so I'm working really hard with Scott Morrison, he's doing a fantastic job, and he's got a good team there. Operationally, you know, schools are really, one of the, and you know this, one of the most important things that drive people to a community, if you have good schools, it attracts people, it brings property values up, which is great. So one of my hopes is, as I'm learning through how Scott operates, both operationally and his budget, is to go through it with him like I've been doing, so that before this portion of the process, where we have the budget dropped in my inbox a week, a couple of days prior to that school committee meeting, which is fine, that's been the process, I'd hope to get in the room with him prior to that, just to kind of talk about where we're at, where they're at. And just, again, I don't have necessarily, like the mayor would have, really the authority to say, no, this, you're going hard on this number. He goes to the school committee, and it's a little bit different dynamic based on how the town code is versus the charter in Beverly. But we can work collaboratively, and I can let's say this is.
We can work more collaboratively.
This is where we're at, you know, an override for this town is an override for the town. You got it, it comes out of the budget, and the school's part of that budget. So, you know, how do we, you know, we didn't ask, we're, the position we talked about adding, the part-time planner potentially, we decided to pull it out of the budget, because there's more articles to the community to vote on. We haven't added any additional positions in that since within our operating budget. I think there's a lot to be said if those other budgets that we incorporate in here, we're having those conversations, so that we're all aware of sort of what our, what we're doing, what they're doing, and if at all possible, to sort of align them better, so there's more consistency. And Scott seems to be a really great team player, he wants to build those relationships. I don't know where that will go. They have a certain style of how they present their budget and how they go through that process. But it doesn't hurt to get in the room with them early on and to explain sort of where we're at.
Let me ask a question, because, I mean, I've been in town meetings where the omnibus budget article, the third, just kind of, it just flies through, and that's it, people take it, whatever it is. And I've been in others where people sort of kind of grumble, ask questions and so on. Given that the school part is so large, and this is a question to talk with Steve Whalen about as well, I've always been surprised that the school superintendent isn't asked to stand up and defend some of the big, the school committee does, but only once back when, was it with, maybe Kevin's first year? Even with Masco, that hasn't been the case. But at least with Masco, it is what it is, you take it or leave it, but you could get an explanation. Sue Givens has gotten up a few times and spoken. And I wonder whether, given the incredible impact of that budget, which we're all expecting, even if it's at 5%, this is currently in there, it's still more than the rest of the town, there should be an expectation that there would be a more comprehensive explanation of why the challenge is. I know some of it's reality, not everybody wants to believe it's all true. There are things that are happening, and educational expenses obviously rise much faster than others. But there ought to be something more than just a FinCom recommendation one way or another.
Yeah, 10 people are not an increase in operational expenses. That's a big change, 10 additional bodies. That's what's leading to the $833,000 increase.
And that goes on and on and on and on, that's the thing, I'm concerned is the rate increase.
And it doesn't include any of the retirement monies or insurance monies, all those are outside of the budget. So you're just looking at the salaries that are hitting theirs.
Yeah.
So you add another third to whatever you see in the salaries.
The real cost to the town.
You're absolutely right.
Yep, I agree.
Can I make a comment, John, just, yeah, an observation? You know, I understand what you're saying, and I look here, if I understand correctly this, Kevin, the 4.33 is the average increase in salaries this year?
If you take out the, some of the smaller percentage increases.
Yeah, and I guess where I'm going is, you talked about, and I agree with Lynn, would focus really on that 4.6%. You know, the non-school budget, that's where you guys can really make decisions.
The direction control.
The biggest driver is the labor, isn't it?
Obviously.
And actually, that survey, that HRS was 2014, 2015. Per their recommendation, they brought everybody up to the market. So exactly as you said, Lynn, 4.8% a year, you know? And I guess from an overall viewpoint, my strong recommendation to the Board of Selectmen would be, really think about the message you could send to everybody else. It would give the message to the FinCom and the school that, you know, it's really tight. We're really gonna come and look at every single spending penny. I don't think it's, I don't think it's unfair to the employees of the town hall either. Because I lived in an industry where it was 2% a year for the last 10 years plus. So that's my observate, I would say, we need to do something, the time is perfect, it's really not on Kevin's back. It's really on the Board of Selectmen.
I need you to do something now, if you're gonna get.
Yes, I do, to send a message, Boyd, and we're clear.
Well, we talk about, you know, whether it's fair to the town employees, and you mentioned they work really hard, they do. But so do the 6,500 people in the town who are not getting a 5% increase, who have to pay for that cost. But the people in town are working just as hard, everybody is working hard. But at some point, you just say, we can't continue to have 6, 7, 8% increases on the taxes. People can just, they can't bear that anymore.
So, Kevin, I just wanted to check, where are we in terms of our schedule right here?
Agenda-wise for today?
Yeah.
I'm a year behind.
Do you want to talk about the things that each of us had open questions about?
I want to start with Dick, but I just want to get a sense of where we are, because I don't want us to be here at 6 o'clock saying, we ought to leave now.
So my hope was, I wanted to make sure we had the conversation on salaries.
Thank you.
Because that's something that we've all, we've had.
We've talked about.
We need to have some clarity around sort of what's going on with that, and the direction we want to move in.
Can we give you, can we make a decision today on, on that thought, on what each of us think? Because we're not gonna be able to just keep meeting.
Then, let's do that, I just want to get a sense of where we're going, if we have that conversation, starting with Dick, and go around and so on. Does this mean we're gonna get to the Capitol, or do we need to schedule another meeting for the Capitol? Because I really don't want to spend another hour on Capitol.
It would really depend on how much, how much in the weeds we get with the, the budget.
I would prefer, with all due respect to my colleagues, to have another meeting on the Capitol, because I think there are gonna be questions on that. My head is into the operating right now, and it deserves the time and so on. And that, even personally, would make me feel a little bit better about taking the time. We still need to have to talk about this, as you mentioned, Lynn, is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, if that gives enough time to that, well, I don't know what the timeframes are, when do you need the Capitol numbers tied down to go to FinCom?
We're in good shape, Tom, on that.
Okay.
I don't, I would say that, I mean, as we continue to take the steps with the warrant, keep taking steps on the budget, keep taking steps on the Capitol. It's all moving in the right direction. So, I mean, if we were to schedule something for next week, even, that would probably be fine.
Okay. Let's do that at the end of this meeting, but I would like to, then we're gonna continue with the operating piece here. And I know Kevin, so I hand it over to you, we're all sort of sharing in it, which I frankly, if you're not very comfortable with. I'm okay with Lynn. I'm okay with Lynn's point of view about kinda checking in with where we're at. And we start with you, Dick, and we think I had a comment that was relating to this or something else, but I interrupted you and we're starting.
I'm gonna make a motion to, to open up the official discussion. And in the end, we should come up with a vote of some sort on it at a certain percent. A little bit of a follow-on to what you said, John. The idea of changing the mentality from a simple two and that's it type of thing. And so, I'm gonna make a motion that this year's, the grid for fiscal year 2021, the increased from fiscal year 2020 by 1.5%.
Added to the 2.75?
The grid, the, the grid compared to FY20 will increase 1.5%.
This is equivalent to what we call the COLA. It's the adjustment.
Oh, it's the COLA?
It's the adjustment.
So that would change something to 1.5%.
Okay, let's see.
And, um, is that your motion, Dick?
That's the motion.
I'd like to see if there's a second and then we can discuss. Is there a second?
Second.
I figured you'd be the first one. So we have a motion on the floor and so on.
And it's, it's also a discussion and amendment, whatever.
Let me just.
But it is in many ways our responsibility to do this. We have not formally done this in the past few years.
That's right.
But we, we should do something. So that's the motion at this point for discussion.
Okay, so I, what I can say, just for clarification, every window on this chart's gonna go up by one and a half percent.
Yes.
In theory.
As opposed to this. This was 20, this was 2.
Yeah, okay. If this is FY20, then each one will go up 1.5.
The difference between them will still maintain at 2.75. It's just that they'll all rise.
Yep, right.
I just wanted to see.
Everything stays the same, except instead of 2% COLA, it's one and a half.
I'd like to ask a question, not an amendment at this point. Um, given, just, I'm thinking of cover, but also rationality. Given the fact that the federal COLA, um, the actual cost of living, not just the amount that we put here for an increase, is 1.6%. Whether an amendment to change that to 1.6% would be appropriate as a more easily sellable number?
Well, then you got the cover that says, hey, that's what the federal government's saying.
I'm not sure we need cover though. Um, you still have 2.75 that's going on top of that when we already determined that we don't have a problem trying to close the gap. It was closed in 2014.
This, in my view, structurally needs to be changed. I think 2 and 3/4% step to step is, in my view, too much. And, but that's not something we're gonna solve right now. That, to me, is something to work on next year.
I agree.
And based upon the Collins report and so on. That's gonna be a big piece, Kevin, that goes on a priority for 2022 budget. We're gonna want to be working from a different thing here. Um, what I'm trying to do is ease everybody into the fact that, without making big changes here, we're automatically saying, and Dick, I appreciate your point, it's the first time the selectmen are kind of voting on it as opposed to just kind of, yeah, I'm going on and voting the whole thing as a warrant article. But if we say 1.60, and again, my own feeling is financially, the tenth of a percent isn't that much. It makes a clear step that we're paying attention to what's going on around us. It avoids us, you know, I just think it provides a little bit of cover at not many dollars and it clearly says that we are going down from where we've been in the past.
One other thought to this too is, is a structural component of this that, um, that we've talked about. I, I don't like that you're in one bucket or the other on that step every year.
Yeah.
And in, by default, everyone's pretty much for the most part received that step. So the structural changes associated with this, I'd like to find a way, and I don't know what that solution is yet. I mean, we're gonna learn as we go through these processes with this, if we do the salary survey and we do the Collins Center. Where there'll be some suggestions that they'll put on the table, how we can do this better. But we might be able to do something rather than just saying, you're getting that, that, uh, that step increase of 2.75 or you're not. Somewhere in between, right? If you, if you perform adequately, you get something else. If you perform exceptionally, you get something else. And if you don't perform well, you get something else. And something in between even that possibly. That's my, I guess, as we talk about the structure component, that's my long-term view. I know on the, on the floor right now, there's a conversation about what we're gonna do this year, but I just wanted to follow up on that.
No, I think.
How did performance?
We're in agreement that five more substantial changes need to happen. What we're trying to do is do something within our power, a new piece of power you're proposing, Dick, to make a statement about beginning to move in a direction we wanna go. It also makes a statement to what effect it may have when it comes to talking to unions and so on. I mean, I don't know. It just says something about the fact we're taking seriously. It's certainly a message to the townspeople, um, what we haven't figured out and it'd be nice to find a way beyond just your operating budget, open house. We gotta find a way to let folks know that, um, there's a new sheriff in town and a new posse and that we're gonna.
This is the posse though. This is the posse. This is not the sheriff's problem.
I wanna make another comment about that. I, I, I wanna make sure we structure so that he doesn't wind up looking like the bad guy. This is our call.
Everyone can say what everyone said.
But I'm okay with, this is how the sausage is made, to be honest. So, my inclination, and I just wanna kinda get a bit of a sense, um, I'd like to propose an amendment, so. Let me do it and you don't second it or vote it if you want, but I would, um, seek to amend the motion on the floor to change 1.5 to 1.6% in line with the federal cost of living, uh, adjustment figure for, uh, the year 2020.
Second.
Should we, I'll just vote on that. There's ready discussion about the 1.6 and then we'll go back to the overall thing.
Uh, another divergent just for a moment.
Yep.
Uh, didn't we pay for an HR study?
Yes. And we're talking about.
No, it was pulled out of the budget last year.
It was.
Salary survey. The HR study was the confirmation, which I believe Robin.
We're talking about a salary survey on the HR study.
The HR study?
That was the thing that Robin did, uh, two months ago and the results are here.
But they didn't look at.
All it's doing is looking at.
Is that Collins, sir?
Yes, yes, Collins. All it's doing is looking at all of our data and they have a checklist.
My question was, my, my next question was, did that include the salary?
No, no. So I'd like to, just so we get clear of what's happening here. Um, the motion will be, um, whether the amendment passes or doesn't, um, to vote on whether we want to basically change that number and declare that's what our, our.
Change last year's grid to something.
And now the amendment is, and the discussion should be limited to, um, you okay with 1.6? Or if you vote it down, you're saying, I wanna keep it at 1.5?
Correct.
So that's the motion. We have a, um, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion before we take a vote on that?
On 1.6.
5, 1, 3, 6, that's what we're voting on.
Any further discussion? Should I call for a vote?
Please, to 1.6. Any other discussion?
I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor of the amendment to, uh, the, uh, motion on the floor to go from 1.5 to 1.6?
Sorry, could I, just real quickly, um, would it benefit you folks to see what that, that dollar result comes back at? So.
No, not at this point. Okay, I appreciate you. I'm curious about.
Uh, yeah.
But we will need that number to look at the other.
We're, we're more interested in the concept.
We're, we're probably more for, you know, what, what the, the message is and so on and this and so on. So, um, I'm gonna call for a vote, um, and, uh, I will ask that you raise your hands so that it is recorded here. Um, all those in favor of the amendment to change from 1.5 to 1.6 on the motion on the floor, please say aye and raise your hand. Aye. Passes unanimously, Debbie. Thank you very much. The motion on the floor now is to change the so-called COLA, the annual adjustment in fact, on the grid in our budget and, um, from 2.00.
No, no, the, the, the motion is to change, increase the FY20 grid to 1.6, an increase of 1.6% on the FY20 grid.
Okay, thank you. I, I, that is said more clear and so on. That is the motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna call a roll call on this one. Um, all those in favor, please say aye. Lynn? Dick?
I say yes.
I say aye.
And Chair says aye. So it passes unanimously on a roll call. Good, good move, Dick.
Uh, just one other comment.
Maybe have a number on at some point.
It is particularly timely in my position, in my opinion, because you're about to start contract negotiations. And that'll help.
Maybe.
Do you wanna go through any other items?
But, but in, in summary, have the votes taken.
Yeah.
I, I believe that what we did is absolutely fair. I don't think that what, what I voted for is in any way unfair.
Yep.
And I'll, I'll take, I'll take, if anybody does not feel that I was fair.
Now, it's a, um, beyond the ongoing assumption, we've shaved 0.4%. It's small, but it's a direction, it's making a statement about the role of the board in declaring this. And I think we're seeing as much about how we're going to proceed and start to take more control as it is.
And how we have to proceed when we consider what our costs are, the percentages, and what our growth is.
Absolutely.
New growth, what revenues we expect to come in.
Okay. I would like to hand the meeting back to Kevin. Is there any other business? We've obviously made some changes. We talked about a lot of things. Is there anything else that you would like to go through today? Then I wanna take Lynn's suggestion to do a check-in with each of the Select Board members.
Well, first and foremost, we just cut that $25,000 number down.
What's the 0.4 actually, what does 0.4 cut?
Makes, makes you look.
Fine, I'm gonna, I put it in notes to get the.
Makes you look even better.
Totals on here would actually be great to, a bottom line total.
Sure, sure. So anyway, so yeah, so the, the, from a perspective of what else within this budget, you know, I highlighted in here some areas in my notes from our previous meetings where I know we've spoken on different topics, different items. Um, so I've got a little bit of, I can give you explanations to it. My thought was is, we can, there's multiple ways we can handle this. We can go through the budget, the 20 pages, department, department, department. If you have a comment on something, um, that you wanna stop and have a discussion, if we wanna do any adjustments to it, we certainly can. That's a common practice when you.
Yes, if we can make it through fairly quickly, I think.
That's the hope, yeah. So, uh, to that end, if, if everyone's comfortable, I'll just start off with the moderator. Obviously, I'm, I'm assuming your folks are all, all set with the department.
He gets 50 times more than we give. And he works one day a year. Come on.
Well, to that end, you guys are up next. $5.
I think he goes down to a dime.
So, um, so, so we, anything in the Selectmen's budget regarding salary wages or other?
Other than the obvious salary.
Well, no, the only red item there, um.
Minute secretary.
Is the minute secretary, and I think we need to do that.
It's a relatively small dollar amount.
I don't, I don't wanna spend, and we talked about this a year ago, two years ago, three. I don't want Debbie spending her time doing that.
The only thing I would ask, cause I look at legal services, the, um, request then for the $5,000 for the salary study, where does that come in here? Where do we get the monies for that?
Uh, this wouldn't be in this budget, cause we'd have, if we're gonna do it right away, we'd pull it out of the operating budget this now. And I need to talk to Donna where that is. There are certain, uh, categories, such as the special services category in the, in the budget. I'd have to see what's out.
And the other, the other thing too about the, about the legal. One of the things, and this applies to us as board members as well, um, that we should all go through Kevin on request. If we, even personally, uh, not for personal things, but for towns to have questions and so on, we should all go through Kevin regarding, um, contact with KP. A, so we can keep track. Uh, B, because, um, there have been cases in the past where we've had overlaps and so on and so forth, or sometimes gaps. And, um, we have a town administrator we trust to maintain follow-up on our, um, goals and objectives. So if we can do that, that's a start. This is a policy for everybody else in town hall now, isn't it?
I, I was gonna say, you already talked to everybody about that same issue, right?
Town hall's on board. I'm working with, uh, the different, uh, boards and commissions, which had a little different operation plan, highly go about calling. I'm reaching out to the chairs and the lines, just saying that, you know, expectation is that if you need this service, let Donna or I know and then we'll move forward from there, just so we're tracking.
Yep, and Lauren Goldberg's on board, as you've said.
And she, we had a conversation, she verified that going forward, any department or, uh, board, board committee that, um, reaches out to them, any correspondence back, we'll have myself, uh, CC'd on that. So that way, if.
You can see if someone called.
If something's out of it, get it back in line.
The committees aren't calling KP directly, right?
They have.
They have.
They have.
That's why he's.
That's why we're doing this. And I've talked.
That hasn't.
They used to have, they're changing that.
It's what it was. Thank you.
Move there.
I can't understand how it ever got there.
Um, could I just suggest for speed, if we get to a page, unless someone has an issue, we'll just move on, cause we've gone through each page. You know, unless someone has highlighted, is, I'd like to further discuss this, we just look at it and move on.
I, let's follow Lynn's idea and so on. So we're on page 2 of 20. Any questions?
Uh, no.
We went to Selectmen's Specialties, ain't we?
Uh, we're on, I thought we went to page 2.
Yeah, page 2. Accounting is the next one.
Accounting.
So, page 2 of 20. Any questions?
I heard a big presentation last night made by Catherine for that $9,378, so.
So, so, let me try to understand this a little bit. How, how this would actually work? Currently, uh, Sue is, is getting 34 hours. She went to 40 hours. Does that mean that Friday afternoon, she works through the, through the afternoon to get 40 hours? How does that, how does this actually work out?
Yeah, so it would be eight to, the way it's proposed, it would be eight to five, which is her department heads who are working 40 hours.
Eight to four, eight to what?
Eight to five. We're actually.
She had an hour for?
We, uh, 30, I think.
30 minutes, Phil?
Wait, wait, here's what it's. Debbie will tell us.
That's why I've taken one in two years.
With a half hour break. So seven and a half hours of work and a half hour break is eight hours. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, times four is 32.
What are you saying, eight to five?
On Friday, eight to 12 is in all the four, makes 36 hours. And so I'm asking, if you had 34, that meant something, less, less on Friday, whatever it is. But, if you go from 34 to 40, where does that extra?
Eight to five, you're saying?
So, what we do typically, our doors are open to the public till 4 o'clock, but we have department heads typically staying till 5 o'clock, not later, um, to, in the building. Uh, the employees who are, who are administrative support, who are not working 40 hours, Debbie works, for example, 40 hours, so she's there right with me usually past 5 o'clock. Um, but for those, those administrative assistants who are working less, uh, they typically will work till 4.
Till 4, okay.
So that's where we're seeing the additional hours and then on Friday.
So, so what will happen then with Sue in that particular case, if you go to 40 hours? What would happen? Would she leave at 4 or would she work?
She'd leave at 5.
She'd work at 5?
She'd be in the office with Catherine, um, those days. And then, well Catherine's got a little bit different setup with her Fridays. But, um, and how she allocates her, her hours, she stays later than 5. But, typical standard 40 hours.
No overtime, right? Okay.
So we're still under the 40 hours, which, which is important.
So, how did that, I, I, now I don't wanna get into labor issue, but I have to understand it. Eight hours is a day. Anything more than that is overtime. Unless there's some special ranges for a wage person.
I believe it's based on hour for the week, 40 hours. We go over the 40, that's a week.
It's based on 40 hours a week?
That's my understanding.
That's it, I understand.
They're always, yeah, hours per week.
In summary, what it turns out to be is that somebody works additional four hour, additional hour, four days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and takes those four hours off on Friday from noon to 4 or whatever. In other words, they leave at noon time and so that's the, the four hours they worked there already by that extra hour in Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
She's gonna have to work longer than eight to 12 on Friday.
But, eight to 12 on Friday?
Longer than eight to 12.
No, they don't.
You only have 34 hours if you do eight and a half hours times four. That's 34 hours.
What is eight and a half hours?
It's a nine-hour day, half hour for lunch.
Nine hours. No, the, the hour for lunch is counted as work time. That's the way it's always been.
Well, that's not what you guys.
Well, we used to do from eight to four and there was a lunch break or a half hour, but that was eight hours of work.
Oh, okay, so 36 then, if lunch is counted. Okay. I thought you were saying eight hours and a half hour for lunch.
Okay, okay. So now we're back to the question of, and it's worth it, because if we know what went on at FinCom, we, we should discuss it enough so everybody knows. A lot of discussion was made on this point. The, the, the question that, that my question would be, why or, let, let me tell you the question that, uh, that Shay asked. It was multiple questions, different ways. One of his questions was. One of his questions was, if you do not get it, what will not get done? Which is always a good kind of question. But my question's going to be a little different. My question is, what can we do to change the process that will relieve the need for those six hours? And that's a tough question, because, you know, off the air, what can we do differently? But it is the main question, I think, that should be asked, is what can we do to reduce the need for that? It's by some, an efficiency process? Or deciding, you know, we've done this for 20 years, we ain't going to do it anymore.
And that's the same question we just had about the comp time. It just grows and grows. And at some point, you say, I just can't. You have 40 hours, what does it not?
My concern is, we're not going to get the answer today.
No.
But apparently, Kevin feels, because I talked briefly this morning, that there's a real need, there's a real problem in that office. The stuff's not getting done.
Well, she tried to make the point last night that Sue's job has changed in the sense that she is now an assistant.
Accountant.
Accountant, okay.
What, that was a change?
Well, it's changed because she's doing more of the kind of work that Catherine would normally do. But Catherine's working more than 40 hours already. She's working on weekends and home and everything else.
So the.
What's different? What's different? The town budget is more, but the same number of people or employees, the same? I mean, I don't understand what's made such a change. Okay.
A question may be going forward, is, as you've said, everyone being charged with finding a way to get things done in a more efficient way. Because, I don't know, are all town accountants working on weekends and at night? Why do large towns?
We went for a while without an assistant accountant. I remember when she was doing it all.
She did all.
But not forever, but there were, it was like a year when they, anyway. So the question is, how do we go? I'm asking myself the question, how do we go from here, based on, you know, an employee supervisor, Catherine, knowing her job, whatever else, Kevin looking in and saying things that need to be done? The, I think we have to drive for what we were just talking about, some, was the efficiency that we can come up with for dropping something that we were doing. At this late juncture, which I think it might be, in trying to come up with an answer for this, I would say, why don't we essentially cut the difference or something and add two or four hours or something, but not the whole amount? It's like.
Well, I think we made the, Kevin knows what the point is.
Can't take it away. So if you find the efficiencies, that person still has the hours.
Just because we fund it, doesn't mean that we have to use it. But I know how.
No, but if a person is told their hours are going up to 34 or 36, you can't come back the next year.
They don't have to be.
You don't have to.
They don't have, the person doesn't have to be told on July 1st, it's going to go up. We, in a sense, we have between now and June 15th to figure out what we're, how we're going to improve that office. If we, if we don't find anything to improve it, then we explain that, yep, the budget's there. And if you can and willing to work, you have those additional hours.
So just a couple of quick things. County offices is such a vital department. They're doing really, really good work in the department. They are, right now, I would agree, in capacity, they're at capacity to a certain degree. I think that the, to what we've talked about and what we've, I've talked about with financing, we put together the financing, we've talked about this with the assessor treasurer and, assessor treasurer and accountant. We're talking collectively about how our operations currently work. It's, right now.
Can I maybe cut it then? So at this point, with Kevin's, with both Catherine asking for it and Kevin looking at it, I'm going to say, next, in other words, put that thing that is over guideline in the budget. But.
But I think we should have it as an objective to have Kevin come back to present what they did find. Because this is not just in the accountant's office, it's in the assessor's office. It's hours, now it's in our office, and I know Debbie is working crazy hours. But it's like, whoa, let's pull it back in. Multiple departments keep saying, we're being asked to do more, we have to go on the weekend. It's like, why? Why didn't we manage to do it before and we can't now?
No, and I'm looking at it. I would be in appropriate pride to stick, you know, say definitively, top of the table, this is the reason or that. But I think that, you know, we look at how we operate. I'll do an example of the inspectional services. I think that having somebody at the window ties back to having more hours there. To a certain extent, regardless of what the inspectional person is working. The inspectional person should be working the appropriate amount of hours to be able to get the work done. Doesn't need to have additional hours. I think that the, the impact from a customer service standpoint, we talk, going back to economic development and revitalization, having the tools so that in the field, they can approve with the iPad, approve a permit in real time, so they don't have to wait the weekend that developed, that person, that contractor has to wait the weekend. Those are little details that make a big difference that will see investment in our community. With the different initiatives we're undertaking, I mean, if you've been in my office, seen my whiteboard, it's, you can't even read it, because I just keep writing ideas all over the place of what the priorities are. And so, you know, I know coming in the pipeline, that there's a number of things where I personally, as a single person, I'm going to rely on the team to support some of those efforts. To that end, I don't know what that exactly is going to look like. And at the same time, I'm going to try to create efficiencies within those departments. So as we take on more, bite off more, there's more capacity for those departments to backfill. So if we, for instance, if we had 40 hours for this person now, and then we'd say, okay, departments are going to upload into Munis their invoices directly, rather than having the assistant accountant do it. And we create some efficiency, that might get backfilled by other projects that come through the pipeline, create more capacity, so we can take on more as a community. So it's, if you look at it as a silo, and just say, okay, this person's doing X, Y, and Z today. You know, I look at it and say, okay, finance team, what do we want to accomplish collectively? We want to get payroll completed in six days, not two weeks. And that's a goal we're trying to, how do we get there? How does that entail? What do we do differently in accounting? What do we do differently in the treasurer's office? You know, Tula's talking about right now, our city assessor's talking about trying to do a very comprehensive address changing program. So what that looks like, and I'd say that's scary thought, but what it is, is there's a lot of new developments that have happened, where they not identify properly the address of those new developments. So it's a sixth building or a fifth building, redevelopment development, they'll take the lot number rather than the actual physical address. And so numbers, in some instances, will have like 3, 9, 7, 5 as the addresses. And so from a public safety standpoint, that's very problematic and something we need to address. And so that's going to take the time of the chiefs, it's going to take time from the administrative assistants to pick up some of that. So it's moving time to different places, always looking at how we create efficiencies along the way, too. So leveraging technology, we introduced the work order system for facility due. We talked about that last night. That's going to be a tool where we can take actual data and actually build a budget based on where the needs are. But we need to pay someone to help us build that and manage that process. But there's going to be residual, I don't know what, can't put a dollar to it today, but there'll be value and benefit to it from an operation standpoint. So more broadly speaking, you know, just from the management perspective, and you know, we need to be incredibly thoughtful with what we add in here.